All right, this is, I don't know, so I chose this collet from morning prayer because I always think of, you know, how the daily office sets our rhythm. It's sort of like a heartbeat of how we, you know, might want to go through our day. And this is a collet for guidance. But it's a little bit edited, so here we go. Let us pray. Gracious God, in you we live and move and have our being. We humbly pray you so to guide and govern us by your Holy Spirit, that in all the cares and occupations of our life, we may not forget you, but may remember that we are ever walking in your sight through Jesus Christ our Savior. Amen.
Thank you. Wonderful to see so many familiar and some not familiar to me faces. And so welcome everyone to this this session. I am Anne Gyo and I'm one of the three co-leaders and just am here to welcome you all to the session this evening and we're going to proceed right away to, and I'm going to ask Greta to do a brief introduction and most of the time that we're here will be spent answering your questions, which you can either put in the chat or if you'd like to use the raise your hand function, we can use that as well and we will stay here with you until all of your questions are answered. I realize that many people have to leave in an hour at six o'clock. So if you are one of the people that needs to take off, remember that our, that this will be recorded and the chat will also be recorded and available on the diocese and website. So let's get started and Greta, would you lead off?
Sure. Thanks, Anne. For those of you who don't know who I am, I'm Greta Getline. I'm the dean of the cathedral and I'm relatively new to the diocese. If coming during COVID still counts as being new and it's good to be here with you tonight. I'm here because I was the leader of the Thrive sub task force that was looking at financial stability. And that's going to be the primary focus of our conversation tonight, although we can talk about really anything that's on your mind about the Thrive work. We're happy to talk about any of it. But we wanted to sort of explain a little bit about some of the financial pieces. But we'd like to start, I'd like to start by giving a quick sort of overview of where we've been in this Thrive work and where we are, the recommendations that we're making around the structural changes, because I think that the structural changes really help sort of highlight the entire focus of Thrive and where we're sort of moving. So if it doesn't bother you too much, I'm going to share my screen and pull up the graphic of the structural change that we're proposing for conventions consideration this fall. So somebody unmute and tell me if you can't see it right now. Are we good? Thumbs up. I see a thumbs up.
We're all good.
People that I can see. So hopefully everybody can see all of it. I've got it on my full screen, full size. So hopefully you can see it. So in talking about what we were, we were focusing in three areas in Thrive. We were focusing on financial stability. We were focusing on governance and we were focusing on mission and missional vitality. How do we become a very vital diocese and how do we help our parishes to be vital? So given that and given where we sort of moved in our time in Thrive, which was to discover that though we wanted to be in conversation with New Hampshire and Maine about possible relationships, we also knew that our own house wasn't exactly in order. And so we, instead of just sort of tweaking what we had, we thought, what if we gave fresh eyes to everything and thought about what could we be? And this sort of structure came out of that, out of all three sub task forces work, sort of brought us to this point of thinking about these structural changes. And we're really excited about them. So you can look at this and sort of see what we're thinking. They're sort of in these blue sort of columned areas are four commissions or four areas that support the work of the standing committee with the bishop and the annual convention of the diocese. So supporting the work of the standing committee and the bishop and the annual convention is the Board of Trustees, which is largely unchanged, does the same things that the Board of Trustees has been doing for low these many years and will continue to do. So people will continue to be elected to the Board of Trustees as they are now. I'm not sure if the bishop ever appoints anybody to the board or not, but if she does, she still will and people will still be elected to that board. The second supporting entity is the Commission on Diocese and Organizations. This is the newest thing and is the sort of the least fleshed out because it's so new and it's really going to depend on the work of these four entities, the Rock Point School, Brookhaven, Rock Point Commons and Mission Farm, who make up sort of these, the four entities that are this advisory commission on diocese and organizations. The hope being that as we move into the future, these four entities who may not seem on the surface to have a lot in common, all are part of the diocese of Vermont, all are the responsibility of the diocese of Vermont. And all could probably benefit from being together in relationship, perhaps eventually to share support staff, to maybe share war stories, to share ideas, perhaps even strategic planning. So this will be fleshed out further by those four entities. And then sitting over here on the right is the one that we are all most excited about, which is the Commission on Missional Vitality. Within this commission are two committees and then lots of subcommittees. So the first is what we're now calling the Committee on Ministry. You know this as the Commission on Ministry, which some of you have served on, maybe you're serving on it now. If you're ordained, you went through a process with your own commission on ministry and your diocese. So the basic work of that committee on ministry will remain unchanged. It will continue to shepherd people through the process for ordination, but it will also, under the bishop's direction, begin to assist others in their own vocational discernment outside of the ordination process. Who do we as Christians want to be in this world? So they'll be broadening their vocational discernment out into the larger community. The second entity under this larger commission is the Committee on Congregational Development and Formation. If you've been in this diocese for a while, you may remember the old canons that had these two committees together as 24 people, divided into two teams of 12, one of which was the Commission on Ministry and one of which was supposed to be focused on formation and development. That sort of went by the wayside a long time ago. So we're revitalizing that under this structure. This is where the money is right here. This is where the mission hits the road, as it were, or is in this work. These people who will be on this committee will be overseeing or at least supporting the work of of whatever committees and task forces are formed by the bishop or appointed by convention or otherwise thought of as essential to the mission of the diocese. They'll also be creating formational opportunities, creating educational programs, doing some of the training that's already been happening around leading morning prayer and preaching and all of those other things. So if you have a heart for congregational growth and development, this is where you want to be on the Committee on Congregational Development and Formation. And the hope in having these together on this side of this grid is that they will talk to each other, that the Committee on Ministry and the Committee on Congregational Development and Formation will occasionally meet together and say, hey, this is what we're seeing. This is what we're hearing. How can we help each other to be successful in what the church needs right now and what the church is saying right now? And that as a body, the entire commission might meet once or twice a year as a full body, again, to sort of share those stories and make sure we're all on the same page. All three of these are going to be supported by the Commission on Finance, which is a new thing for us. The Commission on Finance will oversee all financial implications for the diocese. It'll oversee the budget. It'll oversee grants and loans. It will oversee the financial picture for, for all of these organizations, plus the diocese and the Board of Trustees. It'll be providing education and advice, overseeing audits and parochial reports and some of those things. And you can sort of see what's listed here. But the idea, the reason that they're on the bottom like this is that they're supporting each of these pillars, which are in turn supporting the work of the standing committee. So information is going to flow sort of in up and down and sort of across all of these bodies. So that in the end we have open and honest conversation. We have transparency and clear ideas of where we all are so that we're always, as the bishop would say, on the same page about the things that are important for this diocese. So that's what's come out of this. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit more about the financial piece. But I'm going to stop sharing my screen and see if there are specific questions about this before I natter on at you about money. So if you have a specific question, I'd ask you to please raise your hand so I can see that because I can't see everybody on my screen or a comment. If you don't know how to use the raise hand function, if you go down to the bottom of your screen, there's a little button called reactions. And you can click on that and one of the reactions says raise hand. And if you click on that, it'll show up on my screen that you have your hand raised and I can ask you to speak. Any questions or comments or concerns about that? So we're all good with that. All on the same page. That's good. Okay.
Could I, could I just ask Dan if he has any comments as he was the leader of the governance?
Well, thank you. Thank you. And I granted did such an excellent job of walking through the columns that there's not a lot more that I would like to say, just to underline what she said about the the Committee on Congregational Development and Formation really is where the juice is. And I guess what I would add is you will have noticed that there is no longer a diocese and council. And what we're hoping is that the really excited, skilled people from that who had an interest in mission will be nominating themselves for the Committee on Development and Formation, because that's where we want you. Now, I did have a lovely conversation with somebody who I thought would be ideal for that. And she said, oh, no, no, I'm ideal for finance. So find the place where your passion and your skill is. But I do, what did want to point out that there are six to eight places on that piece of the committee on or merchant and congregational development, the other way around. Please consider nominating yourself and maybe at the end I'll say a little bit more about the call for nominations that have gone out and how to respond to that. But that's, that's the only thing I would add. And just to say once again, it's going to be an exciting place to be and we want you there if you have that skill and passion.
Thank you, Stan. And one last thing about that. You might be saying to yourself, gosh, the standing committee now has a whole lot more work to do. Yes, this is true. A lot of it will be delegated out to those four pillars that are supporting the standing committee. And so they will be receiving a lot of information, but not necessarily having to do all of that groundwork themselves. For example, they will direct the Commission on Finance to develop a budget and the Commission on Finance will develop a budget based on any priorities that the standing committee and the bishop are setting for the diocese and then send that back up for review and approval by the standing committee. Those kinds of things. The trustees will still say, you know, we can take 4.5% of endowments this year or whatever the percentage is at day. So all of that will remain in place. So the standing committee will, yes, they'll be seeing more things than they have in the past. Though we're hoping that their workload overall doesn't exponentially increase. And the chairs of each of those four entities, the trustees, the diocese and organizations, the Commission on Missional Vitality and the Commission on Finance will sit in an advisory capacity only on the standing committee as requested by the bishop and the president of the standing committee. So they will meet, they will be at some of those meetings, again, keeping us all on the same page so that we're, we're constantly all looking at the same mission and all moving in the same direction to, to really help the diocese to thrive.
And I would add to that, that, that the, our, one of our major goals was to coordinate things to improve communication. And all of these things are designed by, by what Greta was just talking about, about the people extra, the chairs of the, the commissions on the standing committee, probably meeting no more than four times a year. The standing committee will meet every month. So this is not like huge amount of meetings, but in order that the communication flow is improved and is more specific. And I was just looking at Lisa Ransom, who's president of the standing committee. She's still smiling. So I think, I think we're okay. Now it looks like we do have questions.
Thank you, Stan. Chris Jones.
I'm wondering if you can define formation for me a little bit as far as what, what that means, because that's used in a lot of different ways.
Yeah, I think, I think the development piece is the, is the key piece, but I don't know, Susan Oladol, you're here and you were on that missional vitality piece. I think it's, it's around helping congregations to really sort of form themselves as, as a a vital, a vital place. Do you want to speak to that, that part at all? I mean, we're, we're also building the ship as we sort of, you know, float it. So there's some of that going on as well.
Is that the same, Greta, is building the airplane while flying it?
Exactly the same, building the house around the curtains we've already put up, all of those things.
Excellent. Okay. Hi, everyone. Sorry about my voice. I have late summer, early fall bronchitis. So thanks, Chris, for the question. And the missional vitality group spent a lot of time working on what's, what's our theology? What's our foundational piece, right, for all of this work and the sense of God being with us? And this, you know, responding to the call to get out of the boat and, and go, knowing that God is with us. So I think one of the challenges we had was we wanted very much to keep this quite broad, that there is not a defined set of features of criteria of structure and that local mission, local formation, what the needs are of the local might be different from place to place. And we need to set up our structures in our structured church overall that allow for elasticity, allow for creativity, allow, allow for localized expressions of this. And a lot of what we talked about was how do we follow Jesus now? And how are we following Jesus outside of our established institutionalized expressions currently? What does it mean to follow Jesus outside of our red doors? So those are some of the foundational pieces. We spent lots of time discerning, came out with. I think that if our colleague Walter Brownridge was here, he would have maybe more specifics to say about formation. I know, Chris, that was the heart of your question. I'm answering that the best I can from, from the perspective in the work that we did. I don't know if Lisa Ransom, who was also in the group with me on missional vitality, if there's anything else you'd like to add to this. And Chris, I hope this at least gets started in that movement.
I'll jump in, I'll jump in after Lisa too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure I have any, any more to add. I, I think I think that being able to do that sort of discernment in a broader context with this new commission, which is a new old commission, right? We're going back to the future or whatever. That, that's really, that's really important for our life as a diocese. So Stan.
What I would jump in and say is I'm, as you may know, the archdeacon for diaconal formation, but I'm thinking more about for formation general. I think we tended to think too narrowly about formation in the, our diocese and the Episcopal Church. We think of forming priests and forming deacons, but really formation is the call to your organic ministry in your church, in the parish, whether you're lay or on the way to holy orders. We each have a ministry and are each formed in that ministry. And hopefully there are groups within each parish that are helping people discern their ministry and form into that, whether that's religious education or running a food pantry or social justice or any number of things, pastoral care. You are, we're constantly being formed and discerning ministries. So I want us all to think of formation as going way beyond a particular call to holy orders, but to what we each do as Christians in our parishes and what we're pulled and led to do by God to, to work for the kingdom of God. And so I just wanted to go from that narrow sense of formation to a much larger sense of formation. And each parish is also working on discerning their ministry. I think that's what basically what Susan was saying, their ministry in the community. And that's going to be different from parish to parish.
Thank you, Stan. I'll say one last thing about it and then Nancy will get to your question. You may or may not be aware that nationally, there is a national congregational development committee association. I'm not sure what the, the third word is, whether it's before or after congregational development, but so members of this group will be part of a national body, really looking at church formation and church development and will gain support that way as well. So, and my understanding though, those are pretty good conferences to go to. So so folks who are on that committee will be getting lots of support from their siblings across the broader Episcopal Church. Nancy, your question or comments?
Um, I'm actually wearing my Brookhaven hat right now. I'm I'm president of the Brookhaven Board. And I, I've got to admit the, the Commission on Organizations has, has we, we just don't feel like there's been a lot of communication around what's expected. And I know I hear you say that you're not sure what's expected. But you know, we, we have a pretty small staff at Brookhaven who, who when they hear they're going to have extra meetings to attend with like no clear outcome, that's it, it's difficult for, for us to know, you know, is, is our paid director going to be attending? Am I going to be attending? We, we just we're not sure even what to, what to talk about in, in our meetings, what to plan for. So that's, that's my question around that.
Yeah, that's totally fair, Nancy, and I, I hear you. And I think that that's the least sort of it's the least fleshed out area of what we're talking about and will probably take the longest time to really sort of flesh out and come into its own. So I think the best I can tell you is we're, we're not hoping to overload anybody. We're not trying to add a lot of work to people. What we're trying to do with this structure is ultimately help the, the four bodies that, that have the the most property and, you know, are related to the diocese, but haven't always been related to the diocese, if you know what I mean. Come back into the fold a little bit and see if there's any way that they can be supportive to each other. And also open up the lines of communication a little bit more so that there is support going both ways. So that Brookhaven might be communicating you know, in an annual report or twice a year to the standing committee about what's happening. The financial reports might be being looked at by the Commission on Finance, but also things going the other way that Brookhaven could, for example, say to the standing committee or to the Commission on Finance, hey, we could really use some help in the law. You have any thoughts for us or any ideas or so that there's a much more open and free flowing communication, not just among those four entities, but between all of us at the diocese and sort of considering that Brookhaven is part of the diocese of Vermont, even though you operate very separately. But just sort of re-cement those relationships a little bit and see how we can be without harming each other, be beneficial to one another. And that doesn't probably answer your full question, but I think as sort of we move through these first year or two, I think, I'm hoping that that structure will form itself as you all meet together. A couple of times over the first year to sort of talk about that. And I think it's going to take a little while for that bond to form and for that to really flesh out. And I think that that's okay, that it takes a little while. We don't want to overwhelm anyone with this. That's certainly not the intent.
Well, the, the director got an email just this week saying that he needed okay, that, that was a very overwhelming mistake. I'm just saying.
Something that I intervened in because they said that they scheduled this, this email to go out, but it was not supposed to go out until 2023. So, um, yes, I can understand how that would be.
Yeah, I mean, two weeks. Wow. Just not enough. Two weeks notice is just not enough. So anyway, thank you. I'm glad you intervened because that was.
Yeah, Nancy, no, no worries. Yeah, that is not our intention. And I, I raised my hand to say one of the things that I noticed early on in the pandemic is that there was not enough communication between all the various entities. You know, some entities didn't even realize that you know, other entities were part of the diocese, which I don't, you know, I'm, you know, I'm new. I can say that. I can claim that. And I remember gathering the leaders of, of the entities and we would meet almost weekly for a while. And you know, Rocky was not alone. He's the head of, of this, you know, and Nancy, he, he appreciated. Wow. Okay. Thanks. It's good to have other people to talk to, things. We were able to share information about PPP loans and and other things. And so, you know, I'm sure that there are other efficiencies also that if we are in the habit of relying on each other, on being about the same work, that Rocky at Brookhaven won't be somebody that people only hear from at diocese and convention. Because, you know, others need to know about the ministry that we're engaged in, even though really someone is doing it on our behalf. And so what are some ways that we can also include more people in that ministry?
Thank you, Bishop. Nancy, are you good for a little while with all of that?
No, thank you. That was.
Good. Just want to make sure you're not gonna go and quit or something like that. Well, we wouldn't want that. Wally. You had your hand up. Wally, good. You had your hand up.
I got it. Okay. Since we opened this conversation about the organizations, my understanding is we are the Board of Incorporators for the Brookhaven School. But we have no other relationship particularly with them except electing their board of directors. And I didn't know exactly why they were added because it might be that, although it might be helpful, I don't think there's any liability that comes from being the the Board of Incorporators only. So that's, that's one question that also came up, the same idea that Nancy brought up. The second is I'm not sure why some of the other organizations are included. And I was wondering why the cathedral and the cathedral chapter were not included.
Thanks, Wally. Actually canonically, according to our canons, it says that the diocese of Vermont is bear sole financial responsibility for Brookhaven and for Rock Point Commons and for the Rock Point School. So it's more than just like putting together the board and overseeing that piece of it. So and I think that this is, it's all to the good that we sort of sort of keep everybody sort of in the same house, as it were, so that we're, we are aware of sort of what's happening across the broader, broader diocese. They are part of who we are and in, like the bishop said, it doesn't, doesn't help anyone if the only time we ever hear about them is at convention. And we say, we're making all these votes, but we don't know what we're you know, what we're really dealing with here. So that's all I can offer on that in terms of who else is not in there. The cathedral is a parish and treated as a parish and not necessarily a separate entity, though if, if at convention, there was a resolution put forward to include them in there and there was a convention agreement on that, we could certainly, certainly do that. And there is not currently a cathedral chapter. So that can answer that question. But they're not, they don't have a separate board of directors or a separate function outside of, of being the diocese and cathedral and, and, and the parish. So I don't know if that helps any in that or not. Go ahead.
So the, so that that's the same of Mission Farm. It's a, it's a parish that has some land and it would be the same as a cathedral.
Lisa, would you like to?
It's a mission and, and there's certain things that are connected with the mission and, and the farm itself. And so being that it's a mission, you know, Lisa's the vicar and so she's, you know, I'm vicariously there all the time. And so we do have a certain responsibility for that and. And so we do have a certain responsibility for that. And there are many opportunities there, but that's, you know, that that's all I'll say. I'll let Lisa talk.
Oh, I'm sorry. So you're saying that it's a mission under the bishop?
That's right. That's that's how the that's right. So Mission Farm has been a mission, and I think. What we've discovered in the last few years is that it is also. What is emerging is a deeper relationship with the diocese and maybe a broader scope of mission and programming. Overall, not to mention the largest piece of property with six historic buildings. And so there's a lot going on here, more than a small mission congregation could support on its own. But also the opportunities that are presenting themselves during this pandemic and beyond have kind of helped helped us to reimagine the space as something. More wider.
Could I can I just make one brief comment about the? As we talked in the governance group, these are four very different widely disparate organizations. Couple of which really are pretty independent. This the particularly the schools. Have their own boards and they've been working pretty independently for a very long time and and the our thoughts, as we talked about it in governance, had nothing to do with disrupting that whole flow. But had everything to do with. You know, resources being skimpy everywhere and maybe there could just be discussions about synergies. Between across the four. And I'll stop there.
I put in the chat that our initial thought was that those organizations would meet together four times a year. And it just occurs to me that something we should all talk more about, not not right now, but maybe the Thrive Group is. What we we used to have diocese and companions, and if you might remember that, I think we need some companions to meet with these new. Commissions a few times to help them form their identity. And fit into this new structure. And I think that's something that we could talk about and offer as well. Not that the four directors of those four groups need a lot of help. They're highly competent people, but I think in terms of how things fit into the structure, how not to overburden them. Or their organizations and to make this Commission on Diocese and Structures make sense and be be helpful helpful to everyone, including the four of them. Four groups.
Say one last thing is also. It it's, you know, as a bishop. I don't want to be the only one that is connecting us to these diocesan entities. That and you know, and it's not just because. You know, we we have a responsibility for them legally. So if things go awry. Then it becomes a bigger issue, but I don't want to have a relationship like that. I want to have a relationship where, you know, a lot of times when. Organizations or some sort of nonprofit that starts with a religious. Organization, you know, it starts, then it gets bigger. And then, but and it's because of some some ministry, some need on the community. It's because of someone's belief that, you know, Jesus's presence in that particular community can be best expressed through a school or or whatever. And so, you know, this is part of our way of being able to, you know, sort of recapture that, not to say that they're going to become religious schools or or anything. But this is an opportunity for more of us to be involved with our communities and with what God is doing in those places.
Thank you, Bishop. I'll tell one story and then I want to move on to some of the nitty gritty about the financial. I came from the Diocese of Rhode Island, and in the Diocese of Rhode Island, there are many schools that are Episcopal schools. One of the ones that I would I would say probably more equates with Brookhaven. It's called St. Mary's Home for Girls. It was an orphanage started by the Episcopal Church of, you know, a very long time ago. Became an in and outpatient treatment center for abused children. And remained on the periphery of the Episcopal Church, even though it was still under the umbrella of the Episcopal Church. It hadn't. It hadn't acted, it hadn't, the the diocese hadn't treated it that way in a very long time. Until Bishop Nysley went into his position around nine years ago or so and said, hey. I need to be at those board meetings. And then he'd said to all of the clergy, hey, guess what? As members of the diocese, as clergy members of the diocese, you are, you are by default on the Board of Trustees. For. St. Mary's Home for Girls. And. What changed in that was some clergy, myself included, who could, were invited to and started attending the quarterly informational meetings. And it it boosted not only our own knowledge of what they were doing, but it helped the school staff to see the support, the larger support of the diocese, and really helped them to know that they weren't alone. And so on that measure only, I think developing these kinds of relationships as the bishop was talking about can be really sort of help us to know who is the fullness of Christ's body in this place that we call Vermont and be supportive to one another. That said, if we're ready to move on, I'd like to just talk a little bit more about the financial piece. Which some of you may be interested in, and Paul Horn's going to make a presentation in a little bit. But just an overview of what we did on the financial side of things, what we really looked at and where we came to. We looked at pretty much everything and sort of tossed it all up in the air and said, what can we, what can we do in an interesting way to sort of support the financial sustainability of this diocese? You all heard a lot of talk about a financial cliff that we were facing. We are not financially in the clear by any any means, but we're we're turning that phrase around to sort of talk about a hill we need to climb versus a cliff we're going to fall over. And we want to sort of start climbing that hill to get to a place where we're more sustainable. So we've been looking at at all of the different funds that we have. We've been looking at. What are trying to ask questions about what are the real staffing needs of the various offices of the diocese? Not making specific recommendations around staffing, just sort of having it all in mind as budgets are developed and conversations continue. We do have some very specific thoughts about monies that could be repurposed. From various funds that are being currently underutilized, but but utilized sufficiently. And some of those recommendations will be going before the Board of Trustees and the Standing Committee. To gain their conversation and then approval of moving some of those funds out of their current. Restrictions or in positions and into a more general fund that can be used to support the operations of the diocese. So we've been looking at those kinds of things. We also looked at the flow of information and the various tasks that are required sort of under the financial world of a of a diocese this size. And realized early on that there were a lot of silos doing very siloed work around various pieces of the financial picture. But no one overseeing the entire picture and no one sort of with the entire picture. And so. We thought early on that developing a Commission on Finance would be the way to go to ensure that there was a body. Really supporting all of the financial structures of the diocese and having all of the financial information of the full diocese, including the of the diocesan organizations. And feeding that information in a in a palatable form to the Standing Committee so that when they're making decisions, they have the fullness of information to make decisions with and to the bishop and to convention. So that was our one of our other conclusions. The third thing we looked at was. The apportionments or the or the parish assessments. Not in terms of being able to go down to nothing or lowering the percentages, though I wish that were the case. But in terms of the ease of use of the current way, we the parishes are assessed. To pay the diocese and to offer gifts to the diocese. And we found it to be cumbersome and difficult to plan for. And so we looked at what some other dioceses are doing and what the National Church does. And came up with a new way to to think about the parish assessment that we think will allow both the diocese and parishes to budget more efficiently. And to budget with clarity rather than guesswork. Both at the diocesan level and the parish level. So. If that's okay with everybody, I'm going to ask Paul to go ahead and unmute. And Paul, do you want me to share the presentation or do you want to do it?
Let let me try setting it up. But first, I just want to introduce myself. I'm Paul Horn, the treasurer of the diocese. And I can also consider myself new in this position in less than a year. And there's been a lot of fun things that we've been going over and, you know, that I'll just make a comment first that for the. Let me step back. Earlier, we were talking about the financial cliff. Yes, we're not out of the woods yet. We. What we've seen over the past two years is that the congregational. Fair share assessments and stuff as such has returned to a pre pandemic level. We've received some grants the past year or two that have helped us financially. We applied and have received over a sliding five year period of reduced assessment structure from the National Church. And there has been ongoing expense control in the diocesan office budget. So with that, and I principally talk the diocesan office budget. We're looking at finishing this year with a slight slight surplus as well as next year. But there's still this other question of long term financial sustainability, which we'll be addressing. So what I wanted to do was talk a little bit about. Our assessment process and. Bear with me. So. I assume that everybody can see this. So really, you know, I'm going to walk through this probably somewhat quickly because I know all of you love financial nomenclature, etc. But really, what are we governed by? We have the diocesan canons that mention there'll be an assessment paid in 12 monthly installments throughout the year. Then annually, we have a resolution to adopt the budget and one part of the resolution is for the assessments. And currently, I've highlighted a few areas that we have there that has really led to a lot of complexity as well as. Lack of understanding, misinterpretation by peoples throughout the diocese also. You'd be amazed the amount of time that I think parish people, as well as in the diocesan office, that spend time on the assessments, understanding what they are, following up on it. Yesterday and today, I've spent two or three hours just on this past year's assessment and following up on it. Why is it important? You know, over 70% of our diocesan office operating income is generated by the congregational assessment process. I've talked through a few of these others. We have a confusing true up period at the end of each year. We have inconsistency on how money is sent in. And there is really inordinate and inefficient amount of time administrating this whole process. So what's going to change going forward is we're going to have a process and I'll have an example where it's really based on your operating income two years previously. So in the case of the 2023 assessment, it'll be the 2021 parochial income multiplied by a four tier percentage. We've been using an average four tier percentage for a number of years now. And we're going to continue with the four tier percentage, but it's not going to be a rolling or three year average as such. We have a tier, I think there was it was well thought out. And we want to keep it at this point in time. And the other thing is that the congregation assessments will be in the current month. They'll be due in the current month. And also congregations will have an opportunity to appeal their assessment. So hopefully, the intent of all of this is the process is going to be much simpler. After this year, there'll not be the dreaded true up that happens at year end. And what that is, is is that this year, for example, of our 40 plus parishes, about half overpaid and about half underpaid. Their assessment because of the confusing nature in the administration that we have related to it. So. The proposed resolution will work something like this that will have again that 2021 operating income applied to the four tier percentage level. And that congregations will have an opportunity to appeal their assessment. So jumping to the quick on this, here's an example. If a parish's operating income from their 2021 parochial report. Which parishes have submitted. In this case, we go to the four tier level. And at 159,000, the tier percentage is 15%. Their annual assessment for 2023 is going to be 23,864 and the monthly amount is just divided by 12. It is easily understood. Parishes can budget more efficiently for 2023. The diocese can budget more efficiently efficiently for 2023. As we implement our new information system will truly be on a accrual basis. So that we can issue a report that would say this is the accounts receivable. And it's easily said that these are parishes that are on time or behind in their payments. Right now, it is a a manual process in order to receive that information. And sometimes the information may be not may not be correct. So we have to go back and touch it numerous times. So that's the intent, one of the things coming out of our our thrive subgroup. And again, it was aimed at simplification all the way around. So. Comments, questions? What I would like to do, share that with diocesan treasurers and leadership also. So. I just wanted to see if there was any other comments from anybody.
So again, use the raise hand function if you if you would like to make a comment. If you don't know how, then feel free to just unmute yourself and make a comment. Or ask a question.
Thank you.
Clear as mud? We're all ready. So when this comes before you on the 13th of October, you're ready to to give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down? If you're going to give it a thumbs down, I want to know about it now so we can address your concerns.
We do have quite a few.
Anna.
There may be a lag in my voice. I think this is such a good change. That's all I, it makes all kinds of sense. How much the treasurers struggle through this early, you know.
Thank you, Anna, for that support. Appreciate that. Laura.
Laura, I believe you're muted.
Sorry, thanks. I know approximately, I don't know, maybe five, six years ago, we had that. The assessment was based on the year budget from two years prior. And I I'm not exactly sure, but it was, you know, considered advantageous to go to the way it is right now. Does anybody know? There must have been some challenges to the system in order to to move away from it. So I'm not saying that I just approve of it because, you know, there's for the reasons that you spoke of, but I'm just wondering why we moved away from it to start with, if anybody knows.
Maybe Wally Good, his hand is raised, maybe he has an input on that.
And so is Earl's. I think Earl knows too, sort of what happened.
Go let Wally answer, please.
About the time that this change occurred. We had had a major discussion and then there was. Discussion and then there was a year and a half. Special Committee on the Financial Future of the Diocese. And that committee decided that on a one year whack. You're you might have had a good year, you might have had a bad year. You might have you're in a crash and you're you're continuing to decrease rapidly. Nobody was claiming that they were expanding their budgets very much. So it was a way to average out the effect of. A. An effect instead of just on a one year flip. But if you want to go to the one year flip, that's what you decide.
Thanks. Well, that's a good. That three year average, I think the work that was done before to have a tier percentage was good. The I looked at at least over the past few years. And there's only been one or two parishes that have changed percentage tier levels. So I think it's proven out that it's not been as significant. And I think with the opportunity, if if there is something that's very unusual, there is the opportunity for parishes to come back to. The diocesan office and Commission on Finance to relook at their assessment.
Earl.
Yeah, and I was on council when Wally was the treasurer and we we put that into place. And the idea we did have a little more, I think even a fair amount of instability with a lot of parish finances, which was why the idea. Developed. Yeah, it's good that things are more stable now. That that's very good. I think there's always been though the option of of basically taking the assessment and dividing it by 12 and paying it like that. The reason we put the other in is because we know parishes have some cash flow issues. So yeah, one month is good, one month is not so good, that sort of thing. And that the idea was to sort of pay as you go. And that's why the and then a true up at the end, sort of, you know. And so I know it was quite cumbersome. I think with probably coming out of the pandemic now. And it's good to hear, Paul, that there is more stability. I'm glad you looked at that, that this will probably work. I wouldn't be surprised, though, if there is, you know, a little bit of grumbling about the pay as you go. Because that's worked out, at least in our situation in Berry, pretty well. And the true up, it's, you know, a couple hundred dollars the end of the year. And I don't think it's ever been more than, I don't think we've ever been more than like 400 bucks off.
Right now, I'm following up with four parishes that owe large sums of money. I'm talking thousands with the true up. So.
Right. And one of those is us. We got hit with a $9,000 bill at the end of the year. And that's in that you can't, you just can't plan for that. And so I think what changes in this Earl that we're hopeful for and and Wally and Laura is that. The lines of communication will be more open between the individual parishes and the Commission on Finance. So that with this monthly bill due, if a parish is having a horrible time. That they're sending an email to the Chair of the Commission on Finance and saying, we're in this trouble and, you know. We're struggling this month and probably next month, and we're hoping by the third month to be, you know, more stable. So the Commission on Finance can say, thank you for that information. Now we know what's happening. You know, and then if if at the end of the year, there needs to be an appeal made to forgive that assessment or push it off into the next year, then we can do that. And part of the problem with pay as you go is the diocese can't budget that way. And, you know, they're budgeting on on a wing and a prayer like, well, maybe people, you know. And so they need to build a little cushion into their budget, but, you know, no one can budget on sort of a thing we don't, we don't know. And so. I think there's a balance, we're hoping with this process to achieve a balance between large parishes who can fairly well predict their. Their income and smaller parishes that can't. With the appeal process being sort of that balancing bit in the in the middle. That gives some relief when there's a a difficult time. I hope that that helps sort of think that through a little bit. Laura, are you? Do you have another question?
No, I think that's good. I guess I was just thinking there may be a case or two when somebody's budget.
Right.
Was elevated at one point for a certain reason. And then two years later, it's not anywhere near that high and. Based on something that was quite a bit higher. But if there's an appeal process and if it can be sort of taken care of on a parish by parish basis, it sounds like it's probably going to work pretty well.
That's the goal.
And I think the whole intent on this is is communication because, you know, right now, it's we we the canon says or our resolution says, and you all voted on it, that amounts are paid monthly. Do we really follow up and? You know, act as Darth Vader saying, you gotta, you know, pay this amount monthly. No, we don't. If it gets significantly in arrears, we may ask a question. So it's just. Management.
Did you realize that some congregations functions completely are nearly completely off their endowment income only coming quarterly?
We do that. And if a parish needs to make a different arrangement, they're certainly open to do that. All they need to do is communicate with. With the diocesan office and or the Commission on Finance and other arrangements can certainly be made. If a parish needs to pay quarterly, they can pay quarterly. If they'd rather pay it all upfront in January, when they get their whatever funds they get from that one parish or that pays their assessed their. Their pledge early, they can do it that way also. So the flexibility is going to be the name of the game in all of these things under thrive where. You know, we've created what we think is a good thing. Obviously, I'm terribly excited about it. But it's going to be, it's going to be being tweaked. Over the three year time period that we're that we're instituting it. So hopefully, by the end of the three years, we we've. Created something that totally works and and we're good to go with it. But it's going to be, there's going to be a lot of tweaking. During this, especially the first year as we're creating new things.
But but I do appreciate, you know, Wally and Earl's comments of things that you've experienced a number of years ago that we can keep that in mind as we're going forward. Thanks.
Hey, ask us any questions about any of any of the thrive stuff. We're we're here for you. What else is on your mind? Are you angry? Are you excited? Are you sad? Are you worried? Are you ready for convention business meeting? Vote with some thoughtfulness. Lisa.
I am just so grateful for the this amazing amount of work. That the Thrive Subcommittee did and for all of the work that our treasurer is undergoing. It's not easy to reimagine and then put in play. So I I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. There'll be two more of these meetings before convention. The next one is. The 12th, is that right? Monday night at 6 o'clock on the Zoom, the same bat Zoom channel. They'll, I assume there'll be another reminder email on Monday afternoon. Is that going to be right? Canticle? Oh, not the same length. Don't use the same length. So you have your email from today. Or go on the diocesan website and look up the latest newsletter. It's in there as well. And that was going to be focused a bit on Stan's going to give us a preview of the focus of that meeting. Which is going to be around sort of the nomination process and sort of the new positions that are available for to be elected. And before you do that, Stan, Chad, do you have a question on what we've talked about tonight?
Yeah, you mentioned that diocesan council is going away. What's replacing it? Diocesan Council was kind of the vestry of the diocese elected by people in parishes. And, you know, what is going to do their work?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. The duties of the diocesan council are going in two places, maybe more, but principally two. One is the Committee on Formation and Development, which is going to do that that mission driven piece that really follows our diocese and mission and develops new things. Some of the other pieces are going over to the expanded to the new duties the Standing Committee has in terms of receiving reports and moving those forward. So it feels those are in those, those are the two places that those functions are going to take place. What we're trying to do is is develop a system that that doesn't overtax us with too many groups. But also really finds a way to use people's skills and passions in the very best way. And I think this will do that. But that was an excellent question.
Right. And just to add to that, thank you, Stan, is that the Standing Committee become is the is the the canonically required. Body that works with the bishop on the governance things along with the annual convention. Diocese and Council is something that some dioceses have and some don't. That that can serve as a governing body, but is not canonically required to do so. And so. Some people have had concern that that means that there won't be free and fair elections that are representative of the full diocese. That is not true. There will be free and fair elections that are representative of the diocese. The Standing Committee is an elected body. The Commission on Finance will be an elected body, but the Committee on Congregational Formation and Development and Formation will be an elected body. The Committee on Ministry is an elected body. The Board of Trustees is an elected body. So. All of those elections remain the same. The bishop will have some appointments like she always has had certain appointments just to make sure that the proper energy is being. Put out there to put forward the the mission of the diocese. So there will still be full representation from the full body of who we are as the diocese of Vermont. So I know that that's been an overriding concern. And the nominating committee has been very carefully. Sort of making sure that we're seeking nominations from the fullness of our communion here in Vermont.
Yeah, thank you, because I served on the diocesan commission, the ass and counsel in another diocese, and it was always helpful to have. Some people there who to make sure that the staff and bishops and such don't go off and do things that. Maybe the people in the parishes didn't want them to do. So having elected bodies to to oversee a lot of that sort of thing is is, I think, good idea.
Thank you. Thank you, Chad. Go ahead, Stan.
Just a quick, quick preview of what will happen on the 12th. That is going to focus a lot on nominations, but I don't want you to wait until the 12th to nominate yourself or to urge somebody else to do that. The pre convention nominating committee has included Paul Olson, who is here, and Jenny Ogilvy, who are. Paul is the the dispatched business chair and Jenny is the head chair of the ongoing nominations committee. We've been did a survey that many of you got. We've gotten some nice results from that. And now the call for nominations has gone out. I hope you've all seen it. That's due back on September 16th, which is a Friday. It's an online electronic form. So if you want to nominate yourself for any of these bodies or know somebody who you think should nominate themselves, please urge them to do that. The good news is so far the names we've been getting are good representative of the various parts of the geography of Vermont. And we're really delighted with that because as Greta said, that was one of our focuses on the pre convention nominating committee was to make sure. That we have representation from all over the diocese, and that seems to be happening. So please look for the nomination form. It it has on it. The brief description of the duties of each of the bodies, so you can review those, how many people are needed. And please nominate yourself or urge others to do that. Thank you.
And the link is there in the chat for anyone who hasn't seen it.
And some of you may have gotten calls from the pre convention nominating committee because your name was submitted on the survey. And we we are, we divided those up to to call you and say, will you be willing to nominate yourself? Your name was submitted. So if you got those calls, that's why.
Earl, did you have another question?
I did. Just thanks, Deacon Stan. That's helpful to hear that there's good geographical representation. How's the representation looking as far as clergy lay?
It's good. I mean, so 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 most of those things, well, that's not true. The the new committee on on formation, development and formation, it's looking good. And and we will, we will look at that in terms of of not overloading one of the other, but it's looking good at this point.
Nancy.
And the size of congregations, are you getting small congregations as well represented?
Yes, yes, we are. We're getting both some of the larger ones like St. Michael's Battleboro and some smaller ones like, yes, absolutely. So we're getting that and and we're getting, we're getting some people nominating themselves for the finance commission, which I'm delighted with, who represent both. Large and small groups because the the experience of the large parishes, larger parishes and the smaller ones is so different. And we really need those skilled people who've been managing the money in in the local level to be on that committee. Commission, I'm sorry.
I want to, I know there's more questions. I need to excuse myself. I have another meeting I need to prepare for. So Stan, I'm going to make you the host, if that's okay. So you can continue answering these questions. Thank you all so much for your attention tonight and your excellent questions. And feel free to email me or Stan or Anne or Paul or any of us. As questions come up that you don't want to wait until the next. Town meeting to ask. We are here to make sure that everyone is is fully cognizant of and supportive, hopefully supportive of. What's going to be coming before you before convention? And if you have any qualms or grave concerns that we are talking about them before. The 13th, when we're when we're calling votes on these things. So thank you all. I'm going to say good night. Stan's going to be your host and we'll continue to stay with you to answer questions. Thank you, Stan.
I don't see myself as host.
I'm doing it now.
Oh, good. Cool. Thank you. And now I am. So Craig, you're up next with a question.
Thank you, Dean Greta.
You want to say something, Walter? Okay. I look at the columns and we're a bunch with a bunch of people who are institutions and I understand the reasoning for that. During the COVID, the Rock Point. Camp program. Went down. It's effectively been closed. There's a huge question as to whether the Rock Point program camp program was actually rock points. Or whether it was a diocesan program. That happened at Rock Point. So. My question is, how for the formation? How does the Rock Point Commons? Work with the formation program on the question of the future of camp? I don't see where the crossover, how that's maybe, maybe it's just as easy as asking. I don't know. But. Who owns? A portion of Rock Point that is used by the diocese for program? That's not a question I expected an easy answer to.
And you're certainly not going to get one from me, Craig. I don't mean that in an adversarial way. Thank you for the question, but I'm wondering if. Anne or the bishop or someone can respond to the the Rock Point Board and it's sort of it's it's purview. And do you feel you can do that?
I think I think the Rock Point Board is in development. Very actively and doing a lot of good work. And many of you here have been involved with the Rock Point Commons Board. I think that. The there's an opportunity for. Clearer recognition of the diocesan mission. In. That particular part of that particular one of the diocesan organizations. I think it's been unclear. There's been lack of clarity because there is a nonprofit, non religious friends of Rock Point. That was developed for fundraising purposes. And there are community members on the Rock Point Board as we as you know. How how the diocesan. Mission then interrelates with the Rock Point Board is up to, I think, the. The Commission on Ministry. the commission on ministry and also the Rock Point Board and the interactions thereof going forward. I think this is just a structure that starts to address the fact that, yeah, they have to talk to each other. Now, as far as what happens going forward with the camp, I I don't have insight into that, Greg. I mean, I think that's, I don't have the crystal ball there, and I'm not part of the Rock Point Board. But I think this is an opportunity for the Rock Point Commons Board to be clearer about diocesan, its diocesan relationships.
One thing that Ann said that I would, I would sort of underline and then comes from Brett's presentation. The commit committee, commission on diocesan organizations will meet, a representative from them will meet with the standing committee as will finance, as will somebody from the commission on mission of vitality. So there will be a place for these conversations to take place, Craig. So I think we're, this structure is trying to increase the ability for people to communicate across commissions and entities so that questions like that can be better answered. But thank you for that question.
But I can say that, you know, one of the things I think that confuses the conversation is that you know, being the Episcopal Church, any structure, any property, any anything belongs to the diocese. And and in particular, you know, when when and and especially when there's some sort of legal problem, the diocese ends up bearing responsibility. So, you know, that is something that's hard to explain to people, especially in a secular setting. If you have a secular school that is, you know, part of the diocese, how does that work? Well, it it just, it just does. And and the best way for it to work is for us to maintain those relationships. And Rock Point Camp, like many camps around the around the Episcopal Church are finding that, you know, traditional camp is not necessarily in our future. And so what do we do with these places, these buildings and and this history that we've had? And that is going to be part of what the current Rock Point Commons Board will be working on, figuring out. So what is going to happen? What is the future going to be? So that's, I think, the best answer I can give to that. But, you know, if we are actually as a diocese, all of us responsible for all of the places, including the churches. That's other thing. I don't want to get into that because that's a bunny trail. But anyway, if we're really responsible for what happens all over the state, our our closer connection is also part of what Thrive sought to to help support and and in putting together this task force. That was part of my goal to bring together people from all over the state, all kinds of congregations, all kinds of people to help us dream and imagine what we what we might be in the future and help us to give us, give us a structure for us to to figure out what that is. Because, you know, flying a plane while it's being built can be scary, but it's, you know, it's fun, too. It's, you know, it takes a lot of faith and it's not going to kill us. We'll grow from it.
I feel like we've developed the landing gear, at least, you know, I think we're not just flying blind anymore. I think we've got actually have the the fuselage of the wings and that kind of thing. We may, we may need to next time, but that we're doing pretty well. Are there more questions, more comments? I know some people were nearing and well, we're an hour and 15 minutes.
And I hate to say that I have to, I have to go to Mission Farm. It'll be on Zoom. Got to go to Mission Farm. So I just will say, before I leave, thank you to everyone who came this evening to talk about our, you know, the life of our diocese and household. Thank you so much to all of the members of Thrive and all the hours and hours and hours, hundreds of hours and prayer and thoughtfulness and creativity that you put towards guiding our entire diocese. I'm eternally grateful and look forward to more discussions and seeing what our future will be.
Yes, I don't see any more questions. Perhaps you could leave us with a blessing. Would you do that?
Oh, sure. Really? That's it? All right. Didn't want to shut down the party.
I don't see any more, I don't see any more questions and just be back on the 12.
Okay, all right. So prayer and a prayer and a blessing. Gracious God, thank you so much for the gift of creativity, which is who you are and what you call us to be. Thank you for calling us into this time together. And give thanks in advance for all the the ways that you are revealing yourself to us and that you were urging us on to be your people in the state of Vermont. And the blessing of God, create a redeemer and sustainer be with you all forever and always. Amen.
Amen. Go in peace, to love and serve our Lord.
Thanks, Peter God.
Bye bye, everybody.
Everyone.